Good evening, welcome to Pasco Council, City Council Regular Meeting on this evening of June 3rd, 2019. We have agendas available over on the corner over here by the Chief Gear if you'd like to follow along, or a more detailed council packet is available through the city's website. We also televise our meeting through Facebook Live through our website, as well as Charter Cable Channel 191, and those are available for review later on. If you have any cellphones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And if you get a chance to speak with council, you come to the podium up here and share your name with us. For our records, we'd be very thankful. With housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Seven present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we'll consider these items to be routine, and we'll enact them as a single roll call vote unless a member of the council or public wants something considered separately. Those items include the approval of minutes from the May 20th meeting, bills and communications to approve claims in the total amount of $1,955,578.36, parks and recreation advisory board appointments of Brayden Lady to position number five to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board through 2021, two appointments to the Planning Commission, including Ann Jordan to position number four with expiration in 2024, and Jerry Cochrane to fill position number five with expiration in 2025, inclusivity commission name change and extension to approve amending the name of the inclusivity commission to the Pasco Inclusion Diversity and Equity Commission, and a couple of other updates as well on there. And those are the items on the consent agenda. Anything to be removed or considered separately? Hearing none, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Ms. Barajas, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Unanimous.
And with that, we have, it's unanimous, so we have a consent agenda. So we're going to go on to item four on the agenda, proclamations and acknowledgements, and we do have one, and I also see that we have Loanne Ayers in the back of the room, and if you and your friend want to come on up, this is an item we've talked about before. Talked about, oh, come on up, Mr. Portugal, it's good to see you too, sir.
Hawaiian outfit.
Helping me feel tropical in this weather.
It is. Yeah. We know you came a couple of weeks ago, and we're talking about the importance of the census, and we have something that's a little unusual, and that we have not only a proclamation, but it is literally signed by all the council members, which is the first time I ever remember doing that. And just to recap a little bit, the principles that I think we all hold dear is that the values of the city of Pasco, to commit to an accurate and complete count of people within our city as mandated by the Constitution, and whereas an accurate and complete count is quintessential in determining the needs of our community, which shape business, our education system, roads, public transportation, healthcare, and whereas an outreach budget will be allocated to the city of Pasco to find, to fund outreach as part of an investment of our shared prosperity, and whereas the 2020 census will enable our community to come together and meet the challenges regarding any potential undercount, I, Mayor of Pasco, declare June 3rd, 2018, as Census Proclamation Day, and enthusiastically endorse our community engaging outreach regarding the upcoming 2020 census. And with that, I'm going to bring it down to you, and if you have any thoughts you want to share, feel free.
Well, I certainly appreciate the city of Pasco stepping up to be the first community in Benton and Franklin Counties to officially recognize just the critical nature of the census. No matter where you were born, how old you are, how young you are, if you are, no matter your economic status, every person deserves to be counted. And if we're undercounted, our community gets less in federal funding, less in funding from family foundations and philanthropic organizations, because we will not be showing up in the numbers and the levels of needs that we need. Whether that is roads and bridges, things that we all count on for safety and progress, or it's healthcare, Medicare, Medicaid, free and reduced lunch, support for adoptions, there's a wide range. I know some of you in the audience are parents and grandparents, and are thinking about college costs. Well, that affects student loan availability. So having an accurate account really touches every person in Benton and Franklin Counties. And thank you for this, to the city of Pasco for this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, just basically, now the next step is to ensure that we do the work that is required to make sure that historically undercounted populations are part of the census. So that's work to do for us, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, once again, we, I think, not only the city, but the tri-cities, the state, and the entire nation, want to make sure that everybody's accurately counted, and this little step's an important part of that process. So thank you again for being involved in your community and helping with that. We're done with section four, so we go to item five, is there's other agenda items? Anybody here this evening want to speak on an item not further along on the agenda? I'll start out with Mr. Robinson, and then the gentleman in the back.
Hello, all. For those who don't know, my name is Jeffrey Robinson, and I'm a pretty darn proud member of Councilman Milney's district, or excuse me, Milne's district. I rise proudly today to inform you of an event that happened two days ago that really glorified our city because of the culture that we brought to this event. For those who don't know, June is a very sacred month to the LGBT community. We refer to it as Pride Month. And the reason that we refer to it as such is because of a riot that happened 50 years ago, as of June 28th, and it sparked a revolution in the LGBT civil rights movement and a wave of changes around LGBT issues in our country. The organizers of this event held the Tri-City Pride here in Pasco last year. They held it in downtown Pasco, and they had such a wonderful time that they decided to hold it here again, and they did it in Volunteer Park. I attended that event, and honestly, it was one of the most warm and welcoming experiences of my life. And it wasn't because of the organizers, it was because of the people of Pasco that showed up. It was because of the culture that we, whether you agree with LGBT civil rights or not, whether you have a sincerely held religious objection or not, the culture that we as a city promote. When a gentleman came to this event to cause trouble, to scare and harass the people that were there, and he was, he was screaming obscenities, screaming all kinds of terrible things, the Pasco police were there in seconds, they were respectful to all present, they made absolutely sure that those of us who were in attendance understood that we were wanted and welcome here. And this is the city you lead, this is the culture that you have all helped in your own way to promote. This is what it means to be a Pascoan. There is so much to be proud of, and in one day, at one event, and mind you, I have heard about this every hour pretty much since it happened, we showed who we really are even when we don't always agree with the people that come here to celebrate. If you had asked me before this event if I was proud to be Pascoan, I would say yes. But after this event, getting yet another reminder of who we are fundamentally, and the changes that you have all had a hand in bringing forward, I couldn't be prouder of this city if I tried. I'm damn proud to be a Pascoan, and I'm pretty proud of this council. So thank you for everything, thank you for the tough conversations, and thank you for helping to give us a city where we can actually do things like this and celebrate one another even in disagreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. 50th anniversary too, I believe, of June 28th, 1969, Stonewall riots in New York City.
That is correct, yes.
Googled that, reminded me. Yes, sir.
Counsel, my name is Justin Carey. I'm a lifelong, third-generation Pasco resident, a longtime teacher and coach in the Pasco School District, and I'm also an apologetic follower of Jesus Christ. I am grateful and humbled for the opportunity to speak and for your obvious commitment to upholding the First Amendment and its protection on practice religion, speech, peaceful assembly, and redress of grievances. So four out of five, that's pretty good. As a governing body, your main job, of which you're obviously aware, is to protect the God-given rights of the people. The paramount right enumerated in both the Declaration and the State Constitution is the right to be alive. Article 1, Section 3 of the Washington State Constitution states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. And in my opinion, there is an institution in this city depriving children of the right without due process of law, and it's time their permit to exist in this city be revoked. Nearly 10 years ago, the Planning Commission recommended against a special permit for Planned Parenthood to set up shop on Court Street bordering an elementary school. I'm ashamed I didn't protest then, but I feel called to speak against it now, especially in the light of recent events in our nation. Project Veritas and the Center for Medical Progress released four independently verified videos recently detailing Planned Parenthood's illegal sale of body parts of aborted babies, making $30 to $100 per body part, and even making jokes about buying sports cars from the proceeds. Among other things, this company exists in our community. Planned Parenthood promotes itself as a women's health organization. This claim can be reasonably disputed when more than 50% of the over 300,000 abortions in the year 2014 were females in the womb. They also claim their services are essential to the health of our community. However, there are multiple agencies in our area that perform the same services without promoting or performing abortion. Planned Parenthood's new president, Leanna Nguyen, stated in January of this year, "First, our core mission is providing, protecting, and expanding access to abortion and reproductive healthcare. We will never back down in that fight. It's a fundamental human right, and women's lives are at stake." Planned Parenthood, in her own words, "exist to perform abortions, and fundamentally, a human right cannot directly take the human right of another person." Furthermore, Planned Parenthood not only exists according to the CEO to perform abortions, but has a vision for the future of abortion. It's obvious in places like New York and Virginia, where laws have been passed or attempting to be passed that not only allow third trimester abortions up to the moment of birth, but at least in Virginia, are attempting to pass a law that allows born infants to be killed. The governor of Virginia was quoted on a radio show explaining the process of keeping a baby born, a born baby comfortable while the mother and the doctor discussed whether to kill the baby. Planned Parenthood supported the New York law and did not condemn Governor Northam for his words. A few weeks later, Planned Parenthood praised the defeat of a bill in the US Senate that would have protected children who survived botched abortions. Planned Parenthood has proven over and over they exist for abortions. We have this in our community, but you have the power to remove it. The call to action is clear, Planned Parenthood, in my opinion, must be removed from Pasco. You have the power under Municipal Code 5.04 to revoke the license, you have successfully denied permits to strip clubs and pot shops, you decide that bars can't be too close to churches or schools, and no longer can we be satisfied with the fact that actual abortions aren't being performed in Pasco when they are a short drive over the river to Kenwick, and it's very reasonable to assume, yes, sir, to assume Pasco Planned Parenthood is referring them there. You can make this happen and hold the true fundamental human right to life in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening?
Just a simple question for everyone. I was at the last meeting, and you were interviewing some candidates for the Planning Commission and so forth. I just wonder if it's allowable under your process to, for the members of the public to ask questions also during the interviewing process?
No, the purpose of this section is if you have something that council might not be familiar with, for you to share it with council.
Okay.
Did you have anything you wanted to share?
No.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Patrick Getner. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move on. We go to item six on the agenda, reports from committee's and our officers. Anybody reports from council members? Anybody attend an event or a meeting they wish to share? Mr. Alvarado.
Yes, related more to my day job, but I think it was noteworthy as a Pasco event. Through Tierra Vida, hosted a Passport to Wildlife event where we brought together kids from various elementary schools to expose them to wildlife. Different biologies came from all over the Northwest, and it was a great event, an annual event that brings together kids, just to let them know that, you know, there's wildlife out there, and that there's some great opportunities to learn more about their habitat, about things of that nature. And so, yeah, I just wanted to share that with council.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Our report would have been earlier this, excuse me, would have been last week, actually had second graders from Edwin Markham Elementary, North Pasco part of the school district. About 50 came and sat in these very seats, and I see I didn't put some chairs back exactly right, and had a little mock council meeting where we pretended to elect, actually, we did six districts and one at large position, sort of mirroring Pasco. We got seven elected council members from second grade, who then chose a mayor, who then went through a very short agenda to, and did that in about a half hour, and then they also went and did a tour of the city, as well as doing, the police department and the fire department had some apparatus equipment, and I think had some lunch here as well as too. And I have to say that I went to Edwin Markham 45 years ago myself in second grade, so it sort of seemed a complete thing to be able to host Edwin Markham and come, and it was a very good event to watch second graders make a decision, and then also to pretend that I was the city manager trying to keep the council doing what it needed to do. That's a difficult job, by the way. And I also want to thank staff member April Colwell, and other staff members helped with that as well. Any other reports? Ms. Serrano.
I'll kick this one off, but maybe Councilwoman Barajas would like to finish it. On Friday morning, I attended an open house, and it is a gorgeous building, they provide wonderful services, and maybe Councilwoman Barajas could highlight some of the services they provide over there.
The big building on Court Street got redone and looks wonderful.
Correct. So, getting over a cold. Committee Health Plan in Washington, my day job, health insurance, contracted with the state to offer Medicaid and Medicare services. We have, we had a grand opening for a local regional office. Our corporate office is in Seattle, we have another branch in Vancouver, but we did not have one locally, which meant my office was my car, and I travel everywhere. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Serrano, for attending the grand opening. So we do now have a regional office where we will now be able to offer services locally. So people, just anyone can come in and inquire about eligibility, enrollment, and yeah, we'll be able to offer services in-house now. Thank you again. We did take over, well, we did not take over, we are leasing a portion of the administrative offices for the Tri-Cities Community Health Center, so we're leasing a section of that nice renovated building. So come and come by and check it out, I'll be happy to give you a tour. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Also, no other comments, then do note that we have General Fund Monthly Report, unless a councilmember wants to cover that. We'll go on to section seven on the agenda. Section seven, hearings on and council actions on ordinances, resolutions relating thereto. First item is relation to the vacation of easements at Stevens Middle School, and I believe, is that Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This item is not the public hearing, but it sets the date for the public hearing associated with vacating easements at the Stevens Middle School site. It's a very complicated, both construction and demolition project. The school district intends to build a middle school while the existing Stevens is being occupied and used, and then once the new school is complete, they will be demolishing the old Stevens. So there are a number of steps to take in this process, and the first is vacating the utility easements and providing for any relocation of existing utilities on the site. So this just sets the meeting, or the hearing date for July 1st.
So how about a motion for that hearing date? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 3904, a resolution setting 7:00 PM, Monday, July 1st, 2019, as a time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider vacating easements at 1023 North 24th Avenue.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Serrano, discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of Monday, July 1st, does the date say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We go on to section eight, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, and this one's probably a little bit more interactive, not just setting dates. First item has to do with a preliminary plat for Black Bell Estates. And Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and this probably looks a little familiar to council. You recently approved a zone change for this same property, just less than a month ago, but it involves a preliminary plat on Road 52, it's almost halfway between Court and Sylvester Street. The plat is a result of the, both the rezon and the utility extension agreement that the city and the developer entered into some time ago, or at least started negotiations for. Originally, the plat was intended for 22 lots. Through the utility extension agreement for sewer service, we were able to increase that to 33, and it resulted in not only avoiding the use of septic systems in the UGA in the urban growth area, but it also provides for a much better plat design and probably a better product. So the Planning Commission conducted a hearing on this in April, and after deliberations in May, have forwarded a recommendation of approval with the conditions as shown on the, on the resolution.
Any questions of staff or a motion for approval? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 3905, approving the preliminary plat for Black Bell Estates.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. Alvarado, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 3905, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we go on to a rezone for one parcel from a C1 to a C3 designation. Mr. White.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council. This rezone request involves three acres at the northwest corner of Road 84 and Chapel Hill Boulevard. The property is currently zoned C1, and the applicant has requested a very limited C3 rezon to allow principally a microbrewery on the site. The limitations are administered through a concomitant agreement, which is something that council has complete control over as part of the rezone process, and the concomitant agreements are binding upon the property and any future owners that the property may have. The Planning Commission conducted a hearing on this in April as well, and after deliberations has forwarded a recommendation of approval for city council's consideration.
And questions or a motion? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4440, rezoning a parcel at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Boulevard and Road 84 from C1, retail business to C3, general business, with restrictions as contained in the concomitant agreement, and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez. Questions or discussion on this one? Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Mr. White, I noticed that it seems like staff's preference was the limited C2. Is that still the preference? Maybe I misread what I was saying, but it seemed like there is, you know, very limited use, if any, of the C3 designations, but primarily the preference from staff appeared to be C2.
The, curiously, the only zoning district that allows a microbrewery is the C2 zoning district, and that stems from some history associated with location of a brewery downtown some, many years ago, that actually moved across a river. So yes, the C2 zoning district allows that use, and essentially, all others are already allowed in the C1 and C3 districts, so it pyramids.
Okay. And then, I guess the follow-up was, it looked like there are very limited C3 uses, laundry, wholesale business, and warehouse, and applicants fine with those three opportunities?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question too, and I'm not sure, I wasn't able to read it through the, through the minutes. My understanding too is the buildings got, this was vacant land, buildings got built, and now it seems to be that zoning is, usually it kind of goes in reverse if somebody's going to do some new development. I didn't quite understand that, or if that's effectively part of the record or not.
It is, the, I'm sorry, the property owner did not have leased uses for the building, which is a bit unusual. So in a sense, they are kind of going at it maybe not quite in the order that preference would indicate, but they will be doing some perhaps revisions depending on their tenant mix. I know they have the brewery itself under some sort of contract, and then a number of other uses that are at best tentative.
So there's not a pressure being brought to bear to change the zoning because of the way they built, but they're using the process? That could be a case if they had been established for some time.
Yes.
And wanting to change zoning.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, so is the blue and gray and white door building? What's the construction materials, just out of curiosity? Is the gray brick?
It's synthetic, but yes, it's a synthetic product.
Just curious.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 4440, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we go to item C, and we talked about last week, update to business licensing program. Any updates since then, Ms. Sigdel?
No updates.
Any questions or a motion? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4441, amending Pasco Municipal Code Title 5, Business Licenses and Regulations, providing for participation in the Washington State Business License Service, and amending PMC Section 3.35.050, Business Licenses, and further authorized publication by summary only.
Been seconded by Mr. Milne, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of 4441, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And similarly, ambulance fee update, any updates, Ms. Sigdel, for the next one?
No updates.
And Mr. Maloney?
I move to approve ordinance number 4442, amending Pasco Municipal Code Section 3.85.010, Definitions, and Section 3.85.040, monthly utility service fees and rates, and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barajas, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor of 4442, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And we are off through nine, no unfinished business this evening. We have a summer school interagency agreement, assuming Mr. Dickerson, no changes from last week, was presented by the Assistant Chief?
No changes.
How about a motion then? Mr. Maloney.
I move to approve the interagency agreement with Pasco School District to provide school resource officers for the summer school program at Pasco High, June 19th to July 3rd, and Chihuahua High School, June 18th through July 3rd, and further authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
It's been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Serrano got the second, thank you for the enthusiasm, and I'll ask any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And we go to item 11, miscellaneous discussion, starting out, Mr. Zabel.
Oh, just a few things, Mayor. Note that the hot weather made for a great opening weekend for the pool. We had 658 swimmers and sold 128 season passes, so our staff was super busy that day, as were the splash pads at Kurtzman and at the softball complex, so some of our investments were paying off and keeping our kids cool. Park Rangers are deployed and ready for the season. And then, capital project update, our outfield lights and new seating at Giza Stadium, home of the Dust Hills, is, they're complete and operational, so that's all I had for this evening.
And Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Calendaring is not my forte, but I believe tomorrow's a special day for my friend there on the end, Councilman Milne, is that correct?
Yeah, my birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday. I know we don't always recognize each other, but you know, when it's the day of or day after, you know, I think it's worth giving a shout out. So have a great birthday tomorrow, bud.
And Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, this is going to be a really busy weekend with graduations going on in Pasco. Please be very careful, be very patient. A lot of, a lot of young people are going to be walking the streets, a lot of activities. I know that in the past, there's been over 6,000 people at each one of the graduation lists. events at Edgar Brown Stadium. Just want to give everybody a heads up and congratulate all the 2019 graduates from Pasco High and wish them the very best, you know, in their journey for the future. So again, let's all be cooperative and help the police and just continue to be the wonderful city we've been. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And I guess I would just ask staff, since June is here, July is not that far away. We've also had a number of modifications over the years to our ordinance for fireworks. I'd be interested, as that time approaches, how we will be handling that this year with the changes that happened several years ago. Is that something Mr. Zabel is contemplating?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had some staff level discussions. We can talk about that. I believe when we recap this, last July after the 4th, there were some lessons learned. I think council would give you a briefing at your next workshop on that and
Appreciate it.
Kind of walk through that again. Reminder that, you know, we couldn't change anything for this 4th, so it'd be 4th of July 2020 we could impact.
And I think we'd be appreciative on what, how it will be handled particularly by the police this coming year, what this year would look like.
Yeah, I think last year, as I recall, you know, last year was more of a education process and new, here's the new regulations. Certainly, there were still a lot of illegal fireworks. You didn't make illegal fireworks legal. So that didn't change a whole lot. People that were shooting illegal ones off, shot illegal ones, shot them off like they always have. The legal fireworks reminder to council are the ones that they don't explode, they don't go up in the air. So I don't know that we had a lot of problems with those, but we did not issue a lot of citations. We had a lot more contacts, I think, than previous years by police, but it was more of an educational year. So this year, as I recall, Chief Metzger's words on the topic last summer were kind of a, next year, the gloves and that with illegal fireworks kind of come off and we're going to have to take more decisive action based on the experience we had this year, so, meaning 2018.
And look forward to see if we're on that page in the next workshop meeting or what staff would like to present.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous discussion by council? I guess I ask if there is a need for an executive session?
Not this evening.
Then with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.